Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 14th meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Before we begin, I'd like to make a note that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss a personnel-related matter. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Present.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender is absent this evening. Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here. Now, I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Police Chief, John Viola.
(Inaudible).
To start tonight's meeting, we'll hear a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April as Autism Acceptance Month in Haverford Township, read by Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner, the floor is yours.
Proclamation recognizing April as Autism Acceptance Month in Haverford Township. Whereas autism has been recognized and studied since the early 20th century and over the decades, growing awareness, research, and advocacy have contributed to better understanding and support for individuals on the autism spectrum. Whereas Autism Awareness Month was nationally recognized in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to increase public understanding of autism spectrum disorder, a developmental disability that can affect communication, behavior, and social interaction, and to promote early diagnosis and intervention, as well as support for individuals and families. And whereas autism is a spectrum, meaning it manifests differently and to varying degrees in each individual, and requires a broad and flexible approach to education, healthcare, and community inclusion. And whereas there is a growing call to shift the focus from awareness alone to true inclusion and celebration of autistic individuals as valuable members of our community who bring important talents and new perspectives to our society. And whereas Autism Acceptance Month encourages us to honor neural diversity, challenge outdated stigmas, and affirm that all perspectives are valid, all needs deserve support, and all individuals should be empowered to thrive. And whereas meaningful inclusion requires moving beyond the idea of fixing individuals and instead calls for the creation of environments that accommodate different ways of thinking, learning, and interacting. Autistic and neurodivergent people do not need to be changed, they need to be understood, respected, and supported through thoughtful accommodations that allow them to fully participate in daily life. And whereas Haverford Township celebrates the strengths, talents, and experiences of autistic individuals, both speaking and non-speaking, and affirms its commitment to being a community where every person is valued, included, and supported. And whereas the township is committed to expanding inclusive programs, services, and infrastructure to ensure accessibility and opportunity for residents of all abilities. And whereas by recognizing Autism Acceptance Month, Haverford Township reaffirms its dedication to building a community rooted in dignity, respect, and belonging for every resident. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford hereby proclaims April 2025 as Autism Acceptance Month in the Township of Haverford, and encourages all residents to promote understanding and inclusion, learn from autistic-led organizations and individuals, uplift voices from across the spectrum, and advocate for greater access and representation in education, healthcare, employment, and community life. Be it further resolved that Haverford Township remains committed to fostering and welcoming an inclusive community by ensuring that all residents, regardless of ability, are encouraged to participate fully in the civic, cultural, and recreational life of our township. Proclaim this 14th day of April 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey.[271.33][271.33](Applause). And I'll just give a special shout-out to Marie Okyo-Grosso from our Human Relations Commission who helped us draft that proclamation. We'll now move on to the Arbor Day proclamation presented by Commissioner Hart to representatives of the Shade Tree Commission. Commissioner Hart, the floor is yours.
Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, reduce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the last Friday in April as Arbor Day in Haverford Township, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees, parks, and woodlands. And be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaim this 14th day of April 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart.[404.62][404.62](Applause). Are there any representatives from the Shade Tree Commission here this evening? Great. Are you willing to share a few words about what the Shade Tree Commission does?
Please face you.
Please face us. Join us at the podium here. Make sure that the podium light is on so we can hear.
This is Jim Stevens, who's the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission.
Excuse me, Jim Stevens, as Jerry said, current Chair of the Shade Tree Commission. Yeah, I prepared a short statement here in line with the Township Code Comprehensive Plan and Climate Action Plan. So glad there's a climate action plan in Haverford Township. The Shade Tree Commission advises the Board of Commissioners and the Township Manager with respect to preservation and maintenance and planting of shade trees in the township, and studies problems to help determine the needs of the township in connection with its tree management program. First thing I want to do is just acknowledge that there are seven of us on the Shade Tree Commission now, and I've been there for five years, and there's been a whole slew of people, so I'm not going to mention any names here. People come to this position with a great amount of passion about planting trees, preserving trees, and enhancing the beauty and viability of the township. This is, people are committed to this work. People bring a variety of important skills to carry out what we need to do. Say a few things about what the Shade Tree Commission actually does. First, we review property plans for new development and redevelopment with the goal of retaining as many mature trees as possible and requiring the replacement of trees removed based on the formula in the tree code. In several cases where there has been open land in the last year or two, we have persuaded developers to plant more, sometimes many more, trees than the replacement, tree replacement required. Some examples of this are the Lanark Country Club, the Cooper Town School, and the Chatham School, and we thank the school board and the developers at Lanark for agreeing to do this. We run tree lotteries in the spring and fall each year and give away approximately 250 trees a year to residents who request them. In doing so, we pay attention to increasing the diversity of trees in the township. We educate people about the value of planting and maintaining trees. The proclamation was eloquent on this. We educate people at our lottery, on our township webpage, at our table at township events. We educate people via published essays in township newsletters. We educate neighbors and developers at our monthly meetings. In the last year, we have started several initiatives. If you walk around the township, you have probably seen that there are trees that mess up the sidewalks. Sidewalks are old, the trees are big, nice to have big trees, they damage the sidewalks. So we have helped the township to begin an experiment in flexible porous sidewalks when damage is extensive and the tree is healthy. A grant program is being considered to help residents share the cost of sidewalks in these cases. We have taken on the task of assessing trees and making recommendations to the township when residents request removal of a public tree, either to accept the removal, to recommend the township remove the tree, or to deny, and in many cases, we have denied the request. We have recommended denying the request. Also, we've noticed in many instances where residents do not get a removal request approved, or don't even ask for one actually, before they remove a tree, we're beginning to work with a township for solution to this problem. So trees disappear, no one knows about it until after it's happened. There are a number of situations like this where we are working with the township to revise the tree code to make it more responsive to the goals of the comprehensive plan. So in many ways, we're working to increase the number of trees planted, reduce the number of trees removed. Haverford Township continues to be recognized by Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA.
Thank you. I appreciate it.[712.62][712.62](Applause). Real quick question for you. The Shade Tree Lottery is open now, correct?
Yes, yes.
For application?
The lottery is open now. Go to the township website. On the right-hand side, news flashes, there's an advertisement of it. May 3rd is the date.
Thank you. In case folks at home didn't hear that, May 3rd is the day that they'll be giving the trees away. However, to apply, you need to apply earlier, I think.
Apply earlier, yes. The application is closed 10 days before.
So...
(Inaudible) in some places, in some cases, legitimately climate disallowed.[762.12][762.12](Laughter).
So they will not be planting for you, but again, you can apply online, and I think April 23rd is this year's deadline to apply. Commissioner Holmes, did you have something you wanted to say? I thought I heard you say something. If not, maybe it was just a thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Stevens, for your service. No, that's it.
Okay.
If I could just follow up, echo Jim's words. This is really, I've had the honor of working with Shade Tree Commission for my seven years on the board, and they are a very dedicated, hard-working group who serve an important function in the township. So, thank you for your service.
I will say this, we did, we were the beneficiaries of one of the trees from the lottery years ago, and when I, when we did that, we put in a fake name so nobody could accuse us of me of getting it as a commissioner. But we have that tree now, and it's really grown into a beautiful shade tree in our front yard, so I encourage anybody interested in, I think it's a chestnut? Is that, I don't know, it's, I don't know. Its leaves stay on the longest, it's very thin, leaves are very thin, and it provides beautiful shade. Yes, that may be what it is.
Thank you so much. Thank you again. So we now move on to the citizens' forum portion of our meeting. Each speaker will be given approximately three minutes to share their remarks. We'll begin with individuals who signed up in advance, and during this portion, we also welcome comments on agenda items. If you wish to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda, you'll have the opportunity to do so during the second citizens' forum later in the meeting. So please use your three minutes to make your remarks. This is not a question-and-answer session, but you are encouraged to mention any specific questions you have. Commissioners will then have the opportunity to respond to any matters raised after all the speakers have been heard. With that, I'll now invite our first registered speaker for the evening to the podium, and when coming up to the podium, please mention your name and your address, and then begin your remarks. So with that, I'll invite the first registered speaker, Larry Passmore.
I'm Larry Passmore, 601 Valley Road. I bring two topics to you, completely unrelated to each other. The first one, having the glass recycling container here on the very centrally-located township building site was surely key to its success. Many township residents participated because of both the project's clear merit and the convenient and central location. Now, the container has been moved to one of the most remote parts of the township where residents travel much less frequently. Consider the level of traffic at the Darby and Manoa intersection out here versus Marble Road at Parkview Drive. I call on the township commissioners to find a way to bring the glass recycling container either back to this location or to another centrally-located location in the township. While I disdain prioritizing parking over recycling, which I know is the reason that the container was moved, I do think the best option is to try to find a way to penalize neither recycling nor parking. Second topic is wrong-way bikes and scooters. I am a bicyclist, pedestrian, and motorist, and I appreciate the township's bike lanes. Too often, especially in warm weather months, I see bikes and scooters traveling the wrong way, especially going southbound on Darby Road's northbound bike lane. This is especially dangerous at intersections for pedestrians, not to mention for the wrong-way cyclists themselves, who may not be seen at intersections by motorists who are primarily looking left in the direction of oncoming traffic. Usually, it's young people, likely from the high school or middle school, and perhaps education about basic rules of the road is lacking for these young folks. I call on the township police to work with our schools to ensure students know this basic keep-right safety rule, and also to consider intercepting and redirecting wrong-way southbound cyclists and scooters on the northbound side of Darby at Strathmore Road or south on warm weather afternoons after school dismissal as one more way to assertively educate these young folks. I don't know the frequency of accidents caused by these wrong-way bicyclists, but I believe an assertive effort by our township police can help prevent otherwise inevitable future accidents from wrong-way bikes and scooters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passmore. Now invite Emily Erwin up to the podium. Okay, moving on. Ms. Cader, Lynn Cader, please.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Cader. I live at 1030 Sproul Road in the Bryn Mawr section of the township. I'm here to express concern with the township's recent requirement to substitute a softball for the regulation pickleball. Ever since the township constructed the pickleball courts over a decade ago, a group of people spanning generations, 80-year-olds, 70s, 60s, and downward, have met daily to socialize, exercise, and play pickleball. The community that you, the township, has fostered over the years is something special, and it is very much appreciated. It's what the park was built for. A township park is a taxpayer's amenity, and it is meant to be used by all. Those buying a home next to a park are buying both the positives and the negatives. They benefit from the proximity, but also must deal with the daily use of the park. This use generates, among others, the sounds of summer camps, basketball games, community events, and of course, pickleball play. Would you limit or shut down the summer camps if there were complaints made of the children's shouts and screams while playing? We understand that you have, you have had complaints of the pickleball play by a few of the neighbors. We also know that the township has taken action to address these complaints. You've incurred expenses to add sound attenuation barriers, reduce the hours of play, and close the courts on certain Sundays. Now you're asking the pickleball players to use a softer ball. This is not the game. It's like asking a basketball player to play with a Nerf ball, or a baseball player to play with a tennis ball. We are here tonight to ask that you consider the large number of community members and taxpayers who look forward to using their parks and playing pickleball, as you have thus far listened and acted on behalf of the neighbors. We are specifically asking that we be permitted to continue playing with the regulation pickleball, including the weekday mornings at paddock. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cader.[1222.08][1222.08](Applause). I now invite Katie Fragel-Norton.
My name is Katie Fragel-Norton. I live at 12 Landaf Road. I've lived here since 1989, but I've never been to a Commissioners' meeting, so glad to be here. I come as a co-leader of the HKN Immigration and Refugees Group. We're mostly an ally group and are members of the Pennsylvania Immigration Coalition, the Driving PA Forward Coalition, both statewide organizations. Through these associations, we work more closely with local immigration groups here in Delaware County, Philadelphia, Bucks and Montgomery County. Okay. I sit at the Police Department as part of this community, like the library and the schools and the parks. We're all in this together. That is to say, I trust the Haverford Police, Township Police. I do not trust what's happening at the federal level. When due process is ignored and asylum seekers are sent to a notorious prison in El Salvador, when constitutional rights of free speech and freedom from unreasonable search and seizure are trampled, when a student is picked up on the street by unidentified men, I do not trust certain federal authorities. So I come in opposition to the license plate readers. Okay, I don't like to critique the chief's recommendation. I'm sure at the time that you had the best interest of the township and the department in mind, but today, April 14, 2025, is a different world than the day when you made that decision. I would not feel safer with license plate readers in our township. I would feel less safe. One of its selling points is that, quote, "regional and national data interfaces to improve crime solving through intelligence sharings," end quote. The data is available to federal law enforcement agencies. I don't know whether that includes ICE, but there are confirmed incidents of ATF and DEA assisting ICE in detentions in Delaware County. Let me say that again. ATF and DEA are assisting ICE in detentions in Delaware County within the last month. ATF and DEA would have access to this information, and they would have every opportunity to pass it on to ICE. In fact, many ATF and DEA agents have already been deputized to arrest immigrants. And last Thursday morning, the Department of Homeland Security was parked at the CVS on Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore, and it was reported that someone was detained, although that has not been confirmed. It's not our township, but it's happening in our area. Many residents in Haverford Township are the children and grandchildren of Italian and Irish immigrants who came here about a century ago. Immigrants in Haverford Township now include Irish, and Liberian, and Honduran, and others. Immigrants live in our township, immigrants work in our township, immigrants worship in our township, and immigrants go to school in our township. I want Haverford Township to be a safe place for everyone. We do not need or want our movements to be surveilled with license plate readers that could be shared with untrustworthy federal agencies, but Haverford Township continue to be safe and welcoming for all.[1431.01][1431.01](Applause).
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, that exhausts our list of registered speakers, so now I invite members of our audience who wish to speak on an agenda item only to come up and speak at the podium. So I'm going to start on the left-hand side, I'm going to go row by row, and then we'll get to you. All right, so, left-hand side, first row, second row, third row, fourth row. Mr. Brown.
I'm Jim Brown, 720 East Manoa Road. I too wish to speak against having the traffic cameras to record license plates. Chief Viola spoke about the advantages of having it, and I totally agree that pursuit of people who need to be pursued is a good thing. On the other hand, the current federal administration has shown it does not always care about what the law is and what they're legally entitled to. This system has a database, and I could certainly see ICE come to Chief Viola and say, "You must, in fact, give us access to this database." And I don't know how Chief Viola would feel about responding to that. Or they could come to the township administration and say, "By the way, you will get no more money from the feds if you do not cooperate in this opportunity for us to pursue people who are immigrants, whether they have a legal right to be in this country or whether they do not." And I ask the commissioners whether they wish to be complicit in this kind of operation showing up in our township. So I urge you to say no. Thank you.[1541.71][1541.71](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody else in that row? Moving on to the next row, Mr. Lee.
I'd like to also talk about license plate readers. My name is Michael Lee, I live at 304 Fairland Avenue. At the end of last year, we voted on 10 other license plate readers. It was done without any public input. It was, you know, you mentioned it at the working group meeting, and it got voted on the following week. And so we're doing the same thing here. It got mentioned at the working group meeting, it's being voted on this week. And I think that at the end of this month, we're supposed to have a Ward 1 and Ward 4 meeting about comprehensive plan and other things, and it seems to be that would be a perfect time to discuss this and get community input on it. I think Ward 5 and Ward 6, I've been talking for months about having a board meeting coming up. It just seems that we need resident input on this. And I break this down into two different areas. There's the one area where we're going to use the license plate readers to catch criminals who are like, you know, robbing a bank or an Amber Alert. But there's this interactive database that we're talking about, and will collect data on every resident in Haverford Township at 15 different locations in the township. And so, what data are you collecting, and how will this data be used? How long will it be kept? Who will have access to it? How will this powerful intelligence database be used to solve crimes? And what is a watch list? There's several watch lists. How can you make them? I think that's what the other residents are talking about. Other states are tightening control of this data. Virginia is limiting it to 30 days and putting real controls on how it's used. And the other thing is, it all depends upon license plates being read. So how will the police, when they come across the inevitable license plates that can't be read, will they be stopping cars? So, there's just a lot of questions. That's why it's to have some public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Anybody, yes, Ms. Doughty.[1701.92][1701.92](Applause).
Hi, my name is Dori Doughty, I live in Haverford Township. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I wanted to definitely agree with all the previous speakers about the automated license plate readers, and maybe looking more into what are the risks of having this data that's out there, and maybe perhaps putting us at risk for being, feeling like we're being surveilled, and I'm concerned about that. So I just wanted to voice that, and also second everything that was just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the left-hand side?[1738.01][1738.01](Applause). All right, we'll move on to the right-hand side. First, technically, second row, third row. Gentlemen in the green, we'll start with you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Patton. Whoop, excuse me. A little tall here. So I'd also like to voice my opposition to automatic license plate readers. I also object to this being on the consent item. I certainly don't believe that it's something that should be kind of, it's not, okay. At least originally, at the work session level, it was treated that way. Several people have mentioned the surveillance aspects. Obviously, a police officer would be allowed to stand at the intersection of Westchester Pike and Eagle Road from all night and day and look at these license plates, but the, you know, realistically- And I also feel that to have, the only way this system really works is if you have data collection and then you essentially have a mass surveillance device. Other speakers have already alluded to the fact that it's not very clear where this data will end up. I have read that Palantir, Peter Thiel's data collection company, is trying to basically create a master database on pretty much everyone, integrating all the information that Doge has accumulated in terms of tax records, income records, so forth and so on, immigration status. And in addition to capturing specific information about a license plate, it also tells folks, or specifically the police and anyone else who obtains the data, where that, when that individual was at the intersection, the direction they were going, and so forth and so on. So that over time, it can build up kind of a rendering or image of a person's habits. And while all of us, I suppose, including you, have a vision of ourselves that we don't have anything to hide, nonetheless, we may be going to, you know, a cancer doctor or some other kind of doctor that we don't feel, we don't want everyone to know about it, essentially. And similarly, someone even going to a library to pick up a book could potentially be the subject of some kind of investigation, particularly since they're book bans in many communities, as far as I know, not here. The data, as mentioned, I don't know the specifics of exactly how long the data has been mentioned, but in general, to the extent these have been accepted in other communities, the limits on getting rid of the data has been very strict, accepting, of course, ongoing And essentially, every, you know, 99% of the people who are going through these intersections are not the subject of police targeting, so to speak. So a huge mass of innocent people is essentially being surveilled. Is that my time is up signal?
If you wouldn't mind wrapping up that.
No, that's fine. I think I've covered what needs to be covered. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Valda Birch, and I live 2438 Avon Road. I am in opposition to the automatic license plate readers. As everyone in this room can see, I am a person of color, and I have often been on the receiving end of being profiled, and my sons have been on the receiving end of being profiled. And it's a very uncomfortable feeling when you're an upstanding citizen that pays your taxes, has educated your children, and has done everything that you think you need to do to achieve the American dream, and then people are watching you, gathering information on you, know your personal business. And even though license plate readers might be a new technology, this kind of thing has gone on in this country. And I grew up in the Maryland, DC, Virginia areas. So profiling, gathering information on people that are suspect was quite common. So I just wanted to come and voice my opposition to it. I cannot imagine what it's like for people who are already afraid to leave their homes and to send their children to school, what it's like if, you know, they're already looking over their shoulders every day. And I've had that experience, and it's not a very comfortable feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here?
My name's Robbie Birch, and I live at 2438 Avon Road, and that's my wife. And I'm very much into opposition of these license plate readers too, because right now what's happening is a total disregard for the judicial branch of our government. And so it cannot be disregarded. What we're seeing right now is horrendous. We're seeing people that don't have due process available to them, people that are innocent who actually now are in prison in El Salvador. They didn't, you know, just because of maybe a tattoo, maybe because of a past existence that no longer is part of them. It's a very, very dangerous trend, so I don't want our township to be part of that. It really speaks of something that we saw in the '30s in Germany. It's not a joke. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else on the right-hand side here? Yes.
Hi. My name is Jason Bono. I live at 219 East Park Road. And while I agree with all the sentiments about the license plate readers, I actually want to talk about a different item, the 223 East Park subdivision. I would call on the commissioners to reject this proposal. The bottom line up front is it is just not a common sense proposal for a couple of reasons. It's essentially moving township-owned property on a park road right where there's a fairly busy light, so we're going to have two curb cuts, three houses feeding that. It's going to cause a nightmare for parking because we obviously can't park on those curb cuts, and it's going to drive parking to the other side of the street. There's a lot of kids in those houses that play there, so you're creating obstructions. You're creating basically a dangerous environment for those kids to play where they're used to playing right now. Also, I think it's very appropriate that we had the Arbor Day Foundation talk at the beginning of this, because you can see on the proposal how many trees they're probably going to getting rid of. It's quite a bit. It's pretty alarming. Some of them are fairly large trees. They shield the neighborhood from some of the billboards that are on the other side of the street, so it's really going to, I would say, damage property values, even though these are new property values. My property is right adjacent to it. I also have a lot of concern for the tree that's on my property. I have a 35-foot maple tree that's right on the edge of the property. I voiced my concerns with the shade tree commission, and they seem to echo a lot of those concerns. They put in some recommendations of what they could potentially do to try to save the tree, but unfortunately, the codes don't fully limit them from basically messing with that tree. So I think it just doesn't make sense for the community. It doesn't make sense for the neighborhood. I think there's other things they could do with that lot. The main issue is that the easement that they want to put in to basically move those township-owned properties to park road, that's what's creating the damage to the tree. That's what's requiring them to remove so many trees. They've even admitted it in the planning meeting and in the shade tree commission that that's the main driver of why they need to remove so many trees. So in summary, I would urge the commissioners to reject the proposal. If they want to come back with a more common sense of proposal, that's on them. But I think the community members, unfortunately, the other ones who are here that voiced their concerns during the planning commission are here, but I've spoken with them, and I think I speak on behalf of everyone in the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment? Thank you. So thank you, everyone, for taking the time to come and speak this evening. There will be another opportunity for those who wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda, but at this time, I'd like to open the port of my colleagues on the board who'd like to make any remarks regarding the matters brought to their attention this evening.
President, are we going to have a conversation about the plate readers at the time that we consider the contract, or do you want to have that discussion now?
I think it's fine to wait. It's your prerogative.
Yeah, I just, in regards to the glass recycling, I wonder if it's possible for us to do a study of how much glass has been recycled while the container was here versus what is collected at the reserve, because we're sort of assuming that it's going to drop. But I think, you know, having some statistics would be helpful, so maybe that's one thing we could do.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea. We already do collect the information about how much is recycled, so I think that we'll be able to compare it pretty easily. Any further comments from my colleagues on matters raised?
On that issue, it certainly was way more convenient here at the township than over at the reserve, the glass recycling. Maybe we could do both.
So funny enough, though, I had somebody just tell me this morning that they thought it was wonderful that it moved to the reserve, so I'm a little biased.
Can I comment on that? I agree with the geographic. I think it's much better moving it. I drive up and down Manoa Road every day, and it looked horrific, in my opinion, to drive by, you know, the gateway of our township, and you see that sitting there on a beautiful new building and lot, sitting there cockeyed. It's much better suited where we're putting it.
Thank you.
I would like to, I understand that maybe having that bin in our municipal lot is not terrifically attractive, but on the other hand, it does send a strong message about what our township values and that we want to be good caretakers. And it also reminds people that it is easy to drop off glass when they drive by it so often, and every time someone doesn't put a glass bottle in our recycling, that reduces the cost for the township to recycle. So it's an economic plus when people take the time to put the glass in that container. So I think, I see the pros and cons, but I like Mr. Hart's suggestion that we actually, Dr. Hart's suggestion, excuse me, suggestion that we actually look at the metrics and make a decision about the best place for that container to be based on the data for how fast it fills.
And I just know that the issue was with Park, Par, Park, Park, here as well, is it took up like five spots, I think, and as a lot of you on the board know, every spot during this time, time of year is used and is needed because they come from all over the town. So I agree with like finding the best ways, but this, yeah, just wanted to point that.
Or maybe it comes back after the end of baseball season.
And discuss this more.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Barrett, I saw that the folks from pickleball community did leave, but if you want to make any brief remarks, I would welcome that.
Yes, we've been addressing this issue for like the last three years. Pickleball, as Lynn Cader pointed out, has started in Haverford Township in 2014, and around 2021, we started to hear from the neighbors about the sounds from the pickleball courts and the volume of play. And we, as was pointed out by the speaker, we've done a number of things. This board has allocated resources to put sound curtains up, which did lower the level of sound, but was not consistently below our sound ordinance, which is why we've looked for other measures to try to give some relief to the neighbors, and those measures included, starting a little later in the morning, starting at 9:00 AM, ending at 7:00 PM on weekends and holidays, and giving every other Sunday off at paddock, so the neighbors would have some, a couple of days a month, there was no play there. So we are, you know, not alone. There's groups around the country that are dealing with this issue, and in some of those instances, it's gone to a court case. And our goal was to balance the residents' needs, the neighbors' needs, with the user groups. And we thought that trying to utilize these quieter balls, which definitely, I think, from the data we've seen, would bring us under the sound ordinance and would take away the, some of the concerns of the neighbors. So that's why we're going to try to implement it on a pilot basis and see if that can give some peace to both the neighbors and the user groups. But everything we've done has been to keep pickleball in Haverford Township, including putting new courts in 2019 at Westgate and in 2022 at Grange, was also to disperse the play so there wouldn't be so many people showing up at paddock, because paddock was pretty much every morning in the good weather and every evening in the good weather, four to five hours each time, used by a large group of people. So we're trying to spread it out and also just trying to keep the peace with the neighbors. So that's everything we've done, trying to do that.
Mr. Barrett, I think I would request, obviously, we're not going to keep statistics on who uses our basketball courts or uses our pickleball courts or things like that, but I would ask, similar to the glass concept, if over the next couple of months, it's now spring, if we can have some idea, maybe you can report back to us in June, as to how much the pickleball courts are being used now with the softer balls as compared to what they were, because I do think there's a balance to consider there. And, you know, and a lot of this with pickleball, I found that we talk often about anecdotal stuff, and I just would like to know how much, if there is a falloff, how much there's, how much that falloff is.
Sure. And, you know, right now, there's very little use of those balls. We have instituted them at our classes just to get people used to them, especially the newer players. I think most of the complaints we're hearing from the older players or more experienced players is the game feels different to them. And we're trying to introduce it to, you know, some of the newer players so they feel like, well, this is the game that I learned how to play. But yes, we will keep some information on that, and, you know, we do regularly check by at paddock and Westgate and Grange to see how many people are using it and what the level of sound is. So we'll continue to monitor that and report back to the board.
And just for my benefit, are we reinforcing the softer balls at the other facilities besides paddock?
The plan was to start it at paddock and see how it went there.
Any further comments? Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite, just to respond to Commissioner Holmes, we'll plan on discussing the license plate readers when that is on our agenda a little bit later this evening. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to invite our Chair of the Commissioners' Fire Committee, Commissioner Gondak, to share this month's Bureau of Fire update. Commissioner Gondak, or is yours?
Thank you. First, by way of just general announcement, the Fire EMS Committee did meet on Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, to hear information from Chief McCann's of Haverford Township and representatives in our birth ambulance, just with regards to the overall status of ambulance service in the township, specifically in the county at large, and just to kind of get an update on kind of where that service stands. That being said, as far as the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report for March of 2025, we had total incidents of 77. 57 of them were township incidents, and 20 of them were out of township, mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call was 19. We had 1,472 personnel hours committed to incidents and 1,114 personnel hours committed to training. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to one working fire within Haverford Township on March 4th at 5:44 AM at 2308 Poplar Street. Total 36 members were on the scene for approximately two hours. Haverford Township Bureau of Fire also provided mutual aid to eight working fires within Delaware County. And of note, also, all five fire companies attended an after-action report presented by the Lower Marion Fire Marshal Office of the Lower Marion Firefighter Line of Duty Death that happened on July 4th, 2022. That is the report.
Thank you. Any questions of Commissioner Gondak? Hearing none, I'd like to invite our township auditor, Mr. Ross Anderson, to share his monthly report. Mr. Anderson, or is yours?
First off, we got to say, go Phillies. But I do have a confession for you guys. I actually went to my first Yankees game Friday at Box Seats. That's the reason why I went. Don't worry, it was like lousy and overpriced, and definitely not Phillies, and I'm ashamed to say it, but I've been to more Yankees games than I have Phillies. But I promise you, I would change that by the next meeting. I also had an idea too, you know, this township is so well-run, does things so well. I doubt the federal government can do this well, but why don't we be the ones that acquire Greenland? We could do it. But everybody wants a clear ship here. And you know what? It's also thinking, you know, they're pretty sure they have some quiet space for some pickleball courts there too. All right, but anyways, I have reviewed the warranted expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you. Bye.
Are there questions or comments for Mr. Anderson? All right, at this time, I'd like to invite our township manager, Mr. Berman, to provide his update for this month. Mr. Berman?
Construction is scheduled to begin this week at the Route 3 Westchester Pike and Interstate 476 interchange. It's a over $5 million project. It's a PennDOT project, and the contract was issued to a company called Roadcon of Westchester, and it's intended to I found no irregularities and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you. Bye.
Are there questions or comments for Mr. Anderson? All right. At this time, I'd like to invite our Township Manager, Mr. Berman, to provide his update for this month. Mr. Berman.
Construction is scheduled to begin this week at the Route 3 Westchester Pike and Interstate 476 interchange. It's a over $5 million project. It's a PennDOT project. And the contract was issued to a company called Roadcon of Westchester, and it's intended to improve traffic flow, relieve congestion along Westchester Pike and at the interchange in particular. The project includes new channelized lanes, overhead lane designation signage, new pavement markings, and the work will take place on Lawrence Road, the 476 ramps and Route 3, of course. So at the request of Commissioner Trombetta, PennDOT will host a live virtual meeting to discuss all of this work. The work is scheduled to begin this week, but the meeting will take place virtually on Tuesday, April 23rd at 6:30 p.m. The meeting is going to outline everything you want to know about the project, including the schedule and the anticipated traffic impacts. So we're going to publish on our website and on social media and via Constant Contact the link so that you can sign up for this virtual meeting. In addition, we have an update on the comprehensive plan process, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hart.
Thank you. Later this week, the township will publish the latest draft of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, outlining a 10-year vision for the future of the community. The draft plan envisions a thriving, welcoming and sustainable future that blends tradition with progress while prioritizing its residents' well-being and inclusion of people from all walks of life. The vision includes walkable neighborhoods anchored by robust local businesses, accessible green spaces and intentional well-planned housing. We are strongly encouraging resident feedback. Nearly 18,000 postcards are going out this week to encourage public engagement. Some key points of the latest draft, there is no increased residential density being proposed in residential areas of the township. There is going to be, there are mixed-use development, which will be limited to specific commercial corridors. The next steps in the process, public comment period is open until June 2nd, 2025. You can email your feedback to info@havertownship.com or submit in person. There will be a public meeting on Monday, June 2nd at 6:00 p.m. in the Township Building. The Board of Commissioners is expected to vote on the draft plan on Monday, June 9th at 7:00 p.m. Ways to get involved, again, we strongly encourage you to review the draft plan and share your feedback. The plan will be published on the website, and we will share a link via Constant Contact and social media as well as on the postcard. Thank you.
I also wanted to announce that April 14th to the 18th is Pennsylvania Local Government Week. And for me, I work here for the Commissioners. I work for the entire community. And all the folks sitting over there work for this township. And as employees, we're here, committed to everybody. I have to tell you, the whole thing that went on here with the pickleball and the automated license plate readers was really like refreshing. You know, we work here, we see all the stuff that's going on in the world and all the animosity. And to come here and kind of listen to what everybody has to say in a really particularly civil way is awesome. And I just want to thank everybody for that. And finally, I will announce this, that April is National Pickleball Month, believe it or not.
I think we should have had proclamations for Pickleball Month and Local Government Week next year. Commissioner Quinn volunteers for next year. Thank you so much. We now move on to Agenda Item Number 7, the approval of warrants. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move we approve warrant number 4 of 2025 totaling $8,206,287.87, comprising the general sewer fund payroll from May 13, I'm sorry, March 13th, 2025, in the amount of $937,544.70, general sewer fund payroll from March 27th, 2025, in the amount of $822,529.93, the general sewer fund payroll for April 10th, 2025, in the amount of $794,372.22, general fund dispersments in the amount of $3,058,432.18, sewer fund dispersments in the amount of $706,697.77, community development block grant fund dispersments in the amount of $40,715.31, capital project fund dispersments in the amount of $1,055,650.17, American Rescue Plan Fund dispersments in the amount of $350,832.56, debt service for our 2023 Series A, interest only, in the amount of $366,150, debt service for the 2023 Series B bonds, interest only, in the amount of $62,218.16, credit card statements ending March 27, 2025, in the amount of $11,144.87.
I've heard a motion from Commissioner Holmes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any?
Noting, if I may, that I, while I indicated that the debt service in this set of warrants for Series 23, Series A and Series B, that these payments are interest-only, but these bonds are not interest-only. We still make annual or semi-annual principal payments on those bonds. This happens to be the scheduled interest payment on both of those.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Now move on to Agenda Item Number 8, appointments. Mr. Holmes, I'll now entertain a motion to appoint a representative to the EAC or Environmental Advisory Committee.
And I will move for your indulgence for another month while I sort through this vacancy.
Thank you. We'll table this appointment until next month. We now move on to consider the approval of items listed on the consent agenda. Please note that all items are detailed in the public packet. This time, I'd like to ask my colleagues if anyone wishes to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for individual consideration later in the evening. Hearing no requests, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, I move to approve Items A through H of the consent agenda as far as further detailed in the public packet.
Second.
Thank you. I've heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Board will now consider four ordinances this evening, starting with the second reading of Ordinance Number 3014-2025, a redistricting ordinance. I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt second reading of Ordinance Number 3014-2025, amending Chapter 37, wards and precincts to amend portions of the boundaries of Ward Precincts 3, 4, and 4, 4, and the ward map reapportion the township's voting districts to contain nearly equal electors as practical as officially and finally reported in the 2020 federal decennial census.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion from Commissioner McCluskey, a second by Commissioner Quinn. Motion's now up for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
Just a reminder that this is a second reading, but that we also had a public hearing on this matter to discuss the issues. It stems essentially from Ward 4 having a larger percentage of residents or voting residents than any of the other eight, other wards. And Ward 3, which happened to be right next door, was the lowest. And to balance those percentages out in accordance with guidelines, this was the plan that was presented and adopted at that hearing and in last month's vote.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have just a quick question, because I don't remember the answer, but just for the knowledge of anyone impacted by the change that we're proposing, since we have a primary coming up in a month, will this, will this redistricting be in effect for the primary and/or the general this year?
It will not be for, yeah, it won't be for the primary because after this, it still goes to the county and other entities to review. But it should be given the timeframe in effect for the general election.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Then I'll just take a moment to thank the Redistricting Committee, led by Commissioner Forstie-Grupp, along with our township staff for their important work on this process. As a result of the redistricting, I'll be losing some of the residents that I've had the privilege of serving in the 4th ward. So I just want to say I'm grateful for the opportunity to have represented you. And I know you'll be in good hands with Commissioner McCluskey. So hearing no further questions or comments, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion passes. The board will now consider a second reading of Ordinance Number 3015-2025 regarding traffic. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move we adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number 3015 of 2025, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of the township of Haverford, Chapter 175, vehicles and traffic, to install a stop, excuse me, to install a stop sign on Rosewood Lane at Linden Drive.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Heard a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. The board will now consider a first reading of Ordinance Number P5-2025 regarding traffic. I'll now entertain a motion.
I move we adopt the first reading of Ordinance Number P5-2025, amending and supplementing Ordinance 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of the township of Haverford, Chapter 175, vehicles and traffic, to install stop signs on Hill Road in both directions at the intersection with Leadham Road. Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Aye.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Finally, the board will consider a first reading of Ordinance Number P6-2025 regarding a sewer dedication. I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the first reading of Ordinance Number P6-2025, accepting the dedication of a certain sanitary sewer system identified as the Darby Road Sanitary Sewer Facilities.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Now move on to Agenda Item Number 11, resolutions. The board will consider two resolutions this evening. We'll begin with Resolution Number 2447-2025, which pertains to land development approval for Cooper Town Elementary School. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to adopt Resolution Number 2447-2025, approving the preliminary and final land development plan for Haverford School District for the building addition, parking area, and stormwater management at Cooper Town Elementary School at 800 Cooper Town Road, Haverford.
I've heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board?
This, I should mention, this was reviewed at two Planning Commission meetings, and they, all the recommendations were accepted.
Thank you. They also came before us at our work session last week. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. The board will now consider Resolution Number 2448-2025 related to subdivision and land development at 223 East Park Road and 112 East Township Line Road. I'll now entertain a motion.
A motion to adopt Resolution Number 2448-2025, approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for the Caramanco Homes LLC for a four-lot subdivision and land development, including constructing stormwater management at 2023 East Park Road and 112 East Township Line Road, Haverford Town.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second from Commissioner McCluskey. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board?
Yes, I actually have a couple of questions. In the process of reviewing this just now, I'm, I have a concern. On page 179 of our agenda, which is the Delaware County Planning Department memo dated November 22nd, 2024, on the second page of that, they, they referenced the current proposal. And, did you find that, Mr. Faulkner?
Yes, Commissioner, I do have.
And the current proposal, the current proposal, it says on the November 22nd filing, "The plan proposes to re-subdivide two lots totaling 0.804 acre into four new lots. An existing single-family detached dwelling on the site at the corner of Park Road and Township Line Road is proposed to remain, while a second existing dwelling on the site would be demolished. And three new single-family detached dwellings are proposed." Is there something later that updates that to suggest that they are planning? Because they talked in front of the Planning Commission about keeping the stone house that was there, but I don't see any update to this, what was submitted on November 22nd. So I just wanted to follow up on that.
Just so the board's aware, the current proposal and the proposal the board is considering tonight is to maintain two properties, two existing properties, the one where I guess the daycare was, and then the one that next to it that faces Township Line Road. So those two properties are staying, okay? And then there's two new properties that are being constructed. And to answer your question, Commissioner, I have not seen an updated letter from the Delaware County Planning Department with regard to that because this letter was based on the initial plan, which had them being demolished.
Shouldn't we get that updated letter before we vote on this subdivision?
It would be helpful if we had it. I don't know that it is required, and I have to refer to Mr. Walk on that one.
There wouldn't be a requirement that they resubmit their plan to the Planning Commission.
Of Delaware County?
Delaware County, once it was initially reviewed and commented upon. That plan was an October plan date.
Correct.
And then that plan appears to have been later revised because the plans before you today is a January 25 plan date. So I would imagine the purpose of that is to review that plan, take comments, and make changes to the plan. Of course, then they also then see the Haverford Township Planning Commission, Shade Tree Commission, and there are conditions included, particularly to comply with the April 25 memorandum, April 3rd. So a few weeks ago, Township's Great Shade Tree Commission memorandum. But certainly, the plan is able to change from what was initially reviewed, what the plan is before you hear today.
So let me backtrack just a little bit. So they should get re-approved for the revised plan?
There's no legal requirement.
But there's no legal requirement for that?
Correct. The municipality's planning code requires that the initial plan be submitted for comment. Those comments can then be considered, and if they desire to be incorporated into future plan revisions. But there is not a requirement under the municipality's planning code to then resubmit back to the county planning commission in order to then have that revised plan then approved. Or frankly, it's not even approval, it's just commented upon.
Right.
There's not an approval that's given, it's just comments and recommendations.
And Mr. Walk, if I, if I may, I believe what my colleague's concern is, is... is, is, uh, the ability of what exactly we're voting on and the ability for it to be changed. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're voting on today is a proposal that in, that envisions or contains the, uh, continued, uh, existence of two, two, two homes and two new homes being built. And if the builder wanted to modify that plan in some form or fashion, they would have to come back to the township. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
That is correct. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that that was the original plan required for that demolition, uh, but the new plan would not require that, would, does not call for that demolition. They can't go back on that, uh, and just change their plan if it's not noted on the current plan before you to today, now, then coming back and seeking a, an amendment to the plan and then seeking an approval for that amended plan.
And they, they made the change to not demolishing the house on, on the recommendation of the planning commission. The planning commission felt it would be better to, they wanted to save the, the older house.
The Havre, the Havre Planning Commission?
The Havreford Planning Commission.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just to follow up on, on your, on concern with the tree, which I, is certainly understandable, the, in the, this, the Shade Tree Commission did make recommendations which changed what the planning commission had initially recommended, the plan, so to build up that area closer to your tree to try to maintain it. I mean, it's not a guarantee, but it felt it was much more likely to save it, so that is what's in this, um, final plan. And, and also, as a follow-up, I mean, it, it would be, it, it, the builder has a right to put four homes there, so we, we can make, I mean, the planning commission made comments as to how they can be, they're laid out, and that's what we're proving, but, um, you know, we, I, it's difficult for us as a board to say, well, you can't build there. I, um, they have a right, it's their property.
Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I, uh, I do. Uh, page 184 of our agenda, uh, the letter from, um, the township, um, uh, a letter to the township from Delaware County dated February 25th, 2025. That still refers to new single-family dwelling and driveways proposed on lots 1 to 3, the existing building on lot 4 proposed to remain. Did the decision to keep two of the buildings standing come after that? What happened, Commissioner, was the, at the request of the planning commission, they sort of went back and reexamined the whole subdivision there and, and, and ended up keeping the two existing properties on the corner there and only building two new ones. So, for our edification, is it, is it the plans ultimately that we need to, that only matter here, not the previous letters, not the previous descriptions? It's the plan that's in front of you, yes. And, um, okay, and those plans indicate two new homes being constructed and the two existing buildings staying? Correct.
Uh, but, go ahead, Mr. McCloskey.
Yeah, I mean, just, part of the process is that it goes before these planning commissions for comment and suggestion, and that's, that's sort of the process that's been played out to get to this point of the existing plans. So, if they take the recommendations of the planning commission and the Shade Tree Commission, inevitably, I think, plans will change from November of '24 until now, um, and the, and as was said and presented last week, the, the two properties, the two buildings themselves, the stone buildings, um, are, are no longer being demolished in the current plan, correct?
Correct. What I think Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb is looking for, as am I, is just, is where that is, this is the public agenda, where in the public, where in this agenda is that final, um, forgive the word, concession made?
I, I would like to actually, I know that the plans are there, and I've reviewed the plan, and I agree that the developer has a right to do this subdivision because it only requires two waivers, but I would really like it to be articulated just as clearly as the Shade Tree Commission's letter, that, that second stone house will not be demolished, because when I think about that neighborhood, to demolish a house of that substance and then to build, to have three houses being constructed behind you is fairly significant. It's temporary, but it's significant. And so, I, I, I'm just kind of struggling with the idea that we are going on the plan submitted, which does say existing structure, but I'd like to see it stated in another sort of document. Does that make sense?
The appropriate would be to, to propose to, to amend the resolution, to add an additional condition, that that property, that house, uh, not be demolished as part of this plan or part of this development.
Or, can we do that?
Yeah, or even you can just request that the condition is that both property, right? That would be consistent with the plan. You could, you can just make it as part of a condition that we're going to vote on it, that, um, both property, both existing properties are not demolished.
As part of this development. We're not putting a infinite-
No, right, as part of this development, that's, that's right.
Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb, are you making a motion to amend?
Um, yes, I will make a motion to amend that, um, the, another condition that, um, neither of the existing structures are to, housing structures, dwelling units are to be demolished.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hart, do you agree to that amendment?
Yes, I do.
Can she? As part of this development.
As part of this development, yes.
Commissioner McCloskey, do you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
Can I make one more comment about the trees and the importance of screening that is outlined in the letter? It is really important that, um, that tree be protected at all costs and that a certified arborist, as the Shade Tree Commission letter requires, be there when they are doing the infrastructure work. I would also say that in our township code, that traffic studies are not required unless, I think it's 10 houses are being built, and I think, given the density of Havreford Township and the fact that most of the new building is infill, that we should actually require traffic studies whenever, and I would defer to maybe other people who know better, but that if we're building maybe two or more houses, that we should have a traffic study, especially at a corner as busy as East Park and Township Line Road. That is an incredibly dangerous intersection, and I will say that I use that intersection a great bit, and if you're not really careful proceeding through that light, you are endangering your life because people run that red light all the time. And we have traffic studies that show that, um, our major arteries are, um, incredibly busy and very dangerous, so I would really like us to look again at the zoning code and when we require traffic studies, because I really think this intersection should have had one, but it's not required.
Thank you, Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb. Any further questions or comments? Then this board will consider resolution number 2448-2025 as amended. We'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. We now move on to stipulations and agreements. I will entertain a motion related to a tax assessment appeal.
Motion to approve settlements and stipulations of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeals for property located at 122 Joanna Road.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Now entertain a motion to approve an agreement between the Crossroads Figure Skating Club and Havreford Township.
Make a motion to table this, um, until next month. There's, there's nothing that's going to change with the agreement, but we didn't have it, uh, in time for publication, so we're just going to push it a month so that it can be, um, shared with the public with sufficient time before the voting meeting.
Thank you. We've heard a motion to table. Is there a second? Heard a motion and a second. The motion to table is now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Then we'll move to a voice vote. All of those in favor of tabling this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, please say nay. Any extensions? Motion carries. We will table that till next month. We've now exhausted stipulations and agreements portion of our meeting, and we'll move on to the consideration of three change orders related to the Havreford Township Free Library renovation and expansion project.
President Trombetta.
Yes, Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Motion to approve change order in the amount of $26,541.21 with Rycon Construction, the general contractor of the Havreford Township Free Library renovation and expansion project.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. Move on to a change order with Dolan Mechanical.
President Trombetta.
Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Motion to approve a change order in the amount of $14,522.63 with Dolan Mechanical, the HVAC contractor for the Havreford Township Free Library renovation and expansion project.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries. We'll now move on to a change order with AJM Electric. Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Motion to approve a change order in the amount of $15,969 with AJM Electric, the electrical contractor for the Havreford Township Free Library renovation and expansion project.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board?
Yes, President Trombetta.
Commissioner Forrest-
Ken Matthews, our, um, project engineer, sent a letter dated, dated April 2nd, 2025, where he enumerated these three change orders, and he also said at the bottom of the letter that the remaining project contingency is currently $55,672. So we are still, we still have contingency, um, monies left, and, um, he was asked at the work session whether, um, that will be sufficient, and he assured us and the community that it would be.
Thank you, I knocked on wood as you said that. Appreciate it. Any further questions or comments? All right, um, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest DeGrubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. We'll now consider a purchase of five automatic license plate readers for the police department.
Yes, I make a mo- mo- motion to award a purchase order in the amount of 28,000,000, 000,000,998888 dollars per, per year for five years to five au- 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 automatic lic- license plate re- 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 readers to plate logistics un- under Co- Co-Stars contract nu- number 033- L22-0045.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I was wondering, um, if we could learn who the, what the name of the company is that would be storing the data from Havreford Township?
Plate Logic.
Plate Logic?
Same company, yes.
And how long is it stored?
One year.
One year?
That's correct. It's automatically deleted on a rotating basis.
And who can access the data?
Any police department, municipal police department, or city police department that, uh, pays into the system as the, the cameras. Uh, federal government, I know that's a question that come up, and I understand some of the concerns, uh, with some of the folks who spoke tonight. Federal government does not have access to these cameras.
At least currently.
I can't answer what's going to happen in the future like anybody else can, but, uh, yes, currently, that's correct.
And can any police officer in the township access the data?
Yes, that's correct. They can. Uh, keep in mind that the only thing we see is the license plate and the back of a car, nothing else.
Nothing else?
Nothing else. You don't see, it, it doesn't tell you the race, color, creed, anything like that. You can't even see the driver. It snaps a picture of the license plate. That's the only thing you see. If there's any decals on the back of a car, anything like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, if I can just follow up on that, i- i- is it correct to say that if a police officer wanted to access it, they would have to put in a request that already had some semblance of information? In other words, the number of a license plate they were looking for?
That, that's correct. So, a, a police officer just couldn't search the system in, in the sense of looking for license plates for A through Z. You have to put a specific license plate or a partial plate in there related to a specific crime. So, if, if something comes up and, and we, we are looking for a vehicle where it may have passed one of these cameras, and, and let me just, I'll add a few more things to that, uh, that, uh, who else has them? In, in Pennsylvania, there's, uh, three, over 300 locations that had these license plate readers at intersections. Um, in Delaware County, there's 100 intersections that had them. 20 Delaware County police departments currently have access and are using the system. The LPR systems are hooked into New York and New Jersey that we could access, looking for a license plate through the system through multiple states. Uh, currently, in Pennsylvania, York County, Coverland County, Mercer County, and Pittsburgh all have, uh, access and use these systems. Now, we also have had mobile license plate readers on our cars for over eight years. A little different system where the database, you can't get into the database to check for a particular license plate. What our, our tag readers do on the cars, it'll, if a, if the police car is driving past a wanted vehicle or a, a stolen car, it'll come up on his mobile screen and tell him that that car is wanted for some reason. A criminal warrant for a stolen car.
And, and Chief, just to also reiterate to anyone who might not have, uh, been privy to the conversation at the work session, um, a lot of the conversation thus far has involved, uh, the use, uh, of this tool, uh, in, uh, in dealing with crimes, criminality. Uh, but this, this, uh, plate reader actually is used in other f- fashions, um, to help the community, such as, I, I believe recently you had indicated it was used to locate an Alzheimer's patient, um, who had gone missing from their, from their, uh, their home.
That's correct, Commissioner. I also, I think one of the questions came up, do we have a policy? And I have a sample policy in front of me. we have a policy? And I have a sample policy in front of me. We can't, we weren't going to implement this policy until the tag readers were approved. So as an accredited police department, we must have a policy on everything that we do. The policy in front of me is just waiting my signature. If this gets approved tonight, then we'll move forward with it. Part of that in there is everything a police officer is required to do and what he could be penalized for if he did something wrong. But searching for wanted subjects, researching suspect vehicles for potential reported crimes, investigating suspicious vehicles, amber alerts and silver alerts, to name a few of the things we could access that for. It's a very, very important law enforcement tool, and everybody understands that as you're driving through different communities, your tag and your vehicles are being read everywhere you go, whether it be the turnpike, the Blue Route, parking lots, almost everywhere you go. The simple cell phone that you carry tracks everywhere you're at. We all know that, we just don't think about it. It's just what we have and what we carry is whoever looks at those knows exactly what we're buying and where we're going.
Chief, how, or how long have a lot of the surrounding towns had, had this for?
How long have they had it? Upper Darby's had it for two years now.
Okay.
They, they waited for a grant to get theirs. And when we voted, when I asked the commissioners to vote on the other cameras back in, I guess it was early in the, in the year, it was or last year, I forget which, which month it was, but that was just to allow us to move forward with a grant for additional cameras. So these cameras here are only five cameras that the township is purchasing. If we, if we get the grant, and we have multiple things on the grant we're asking for, we would then come back for another vote.
And you, you- And you haven't heard of any incidents in those town, town?
None whatsoever. We, honestly, I say this in all sincerity, that many, many crimes have been solved because of these, because we see where these cars are traveling. If we are looking for a car, we'll have to call Springfield, we call Upper Darby, we call Marple, or Radnor to have an officer access the system to see if a car has passed through the intersections adjoining Haverford Township. So we use it currently, but we have to go through another police department. We can't access what happens in Haverford Township. Thank you, Chief.
And I would just, I apologize.
No, go ahead, Brian.
I would just point out that as far as kind of the courts review of things like this, it's my understanding that the courts have already weighed in on the question of expectation of privacy with license plates, and the courts, it's settled law in not just the state, but in the, in the, our country as a whole, that there actually is no expectation of privacy in a license plate number, which is why these readers are permitted. It's already settled matter.
And that's correct. And in, in our law enforcement databases, we can access registration, see who owns it with just a few keystrokes. It's just part of what we do, it's part of our job to track, track vehicles. If it's stolen, if it's expired registration, or any other things will come up in the PennDOT system. But we're currently doing that right now anyway. This is just expanding our, our activity and expanding our law enforcement tools.
Thank you for clarifying.
Chief? A couple of questions. One, state law, if I understand, allows these?
That's correct. It's governed by the state, and that's, state police monitor.
State law does not mandate these, right?
Yes.
It is the, it's within the discretion of local police departments to, to purchase these and implement them.
That's correct, Commissioner.
And is it in the discretion of the local police department, your local police department, to stop using them to the extent that you find either that they are not serving their original purpose, or have been, have been distorted to purposes that you did not intend and that none of us on this board intend?
That's absolutely correct, yes.
That is within your discretion?
That's correct, Commissioner.
That's within the discretion of this board to tell the police department to take those down?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Are there municipalities in this state that have outlawed the use of these?
Not to my knowledge.
I don't know the answer to this question, but I suspect that the state probably has preempted the ability of localities to forbid them, but does allow localities not to use them, since obviously we're asking permission now to use them. Chief, when did these first start? Do you know when any police department first started using these in Pennsylvania?
The fixed units?
Sorry?
We, we've had the mobile units for at least eight years.
Yeah, so, okay, so you've had mobile units for how long?
At least eight years.
Okay. And do the, do the fixed units, they predate those, or they're more modern?
Fixed units were always there. It just wasn't one of the things that was federally funded at the time, because we're, all the police departments through the homemade security, five county region, we're focusing mainly on the police vehicles. We have since moved to fixed ones. We found, when I say we, the region has found, and police departments across the region have found that the fixed ones do, are better suited for our needs as far as what, what we are looking for when it comes to crime.
I assume from the, the value of the fixed ones is that it's very easy, even going through townships that don't have the cameras, to perhaps extrapolate the direction that your, that your car is driving, and then-
Correct, yes.
And indeed, cars that pass through Haverford Township and then been caught up again in Upper Darby, and that's how you found them?
So we're looking for a suspect vehicle, we know where, what intersection, which direction it's going, just like I had stated last week in my crime report, when we were able to catch that hijack vehicle on the Blue Route, because Upper Darby contacted us and said it's coming through your town.
Chief, last Thursday morning, I called you with a strange request, didn't I?
You did.
But not for me, was it?
No.
What was that request?
It's about a homemade security vehicle in Ardmore.
On Lancaster Avenue?
Lancaster Avenue.
A block down from the CBS. What did your investigation reveal to you?
I investigated that, that afternoon, and I found that that vehicle was parked at a radio shop, and the vehicle was there to get the radio changed out through just a work order. There was no, there was nobody there. I also spoke to a superintendent from Lower Mary Police tonight, and I'll say this for both of us, we've had no ICE activity in either township at all. So that vehicle, he receives as many calls as, more up there than, because it was in Lower Mary, and the company did move the car because they were getting a lot of abuse also. I don't mean abuse, a lot of phone calls.
Well, some was abuse, right? I mean, obviously people were very concerned about it.
Absolutely.
Express their disapproval to that person for even providing repair for them, didn't they?
It was just a contract with the federal government to do cars in the region, that's all.
Chief, did my call to you on that surprise you at all?
Um, not necessarily, no.
If you had to rate on a scale of one to 10, who's the biggest PIA to the police department on this board, could you name that person right now?
I think we could. I got, I got it. I'll refuse to answer that question intended to be incriminating me, shall I just go there? I think you should, Chief.
One of them pays your salary. Chief, I, I'd laugh, it's not funny. I have been, it has been a very, very difficult meeting for me. People have talked about our complicity in this, a very real discussion and hurt and pain associated with the profile has been, has, has, has been brought again to our attention. This is a very, very serious topic, and it is very hard for me to support your request on this. The things that work in favor of your support for this is, first of all, my relationship with you and with this PD, whom I trust and who aren't doing this because they're being asked by the federal government or the state government to do this, but see this as a valuable tool for you. And I trust your word that to the extent that this gets abused, that this is something you would report back to us and something you do not want to be a party to. Chief, we talk about keeping this information for a year, but when is the information really valuable? When is this at its most valuable?
When is it most valuable during a commission of a crime, when we're looking for a car, or looking for someone, their silver alert or an amber alert?
Oh, in, in law enforcement purposes, what's the value of looking at my driving habits for the last six months?
None whatsoever. We, we can't look at your driving habits.
You just know what, what corners I have in the path?
If I wanted to put your license plate in, I could say Larry Holmes drove through this intersection, this is the direction he was going, but that's about it. Until you get out of, if whatever town you drove in or get out of there where there was cameras on it, then I wouldn't know where you were. Not where you were, where you had been or possibly passed through.
At the, at- Provided, permission is granted to do this. I would ask you one last time to just describe this program, why it is valuable and why it does not pose a danger to the folks in our township who are concerned about the very real and very despicable behavior at the, at our federal government level of depriving people of rights, due process, and other horrific activities that have been taking place for the last 60 days, 90?
I understand that, and I'll say to the folks that are here and people who will see it at home, that I understand what your concerns are, I truly do. I firmly believe that, not I firmly believe, that as leader of this police department, I would never allow any of this information to be used in a adverse, adversarial way or a wrong way. Now, keep in mind that all police officers in Pennsylvania are what we call MOPAC certified. That's just certification through the, the state. We take tests every year to keep ourselves certified. If you violate any of these rules or regulations, and this is part of it also, you could lose your MOPAC certification very easily and lose your job because you use this system for your own benefit or for a reason that's not law enforcement, and we can easily find that out. Now tomorrow, and I'll ask you a question further, Commissioner. Tomorrow, we have the state police coming in for an audit, because it's JNET, that's part of our system, when officers log on to look for something. If something's amiss, officers have been fired, and I know this locally, that police officers have been fired for misusing that system. So if I, as a police officer who's allowed to access this JNET system, which gives me information for driver's license, stuff like that, I do a family member where it comes back, I was checking for something that law enforcement, I get serious problems, and so does the police department, because it just not allows. So we are audited once or twice a year by the state police for that. But to answer your question further, and I've said this before, let's go back a little bit further, that when we first start talking about automatic license plate readers, it was under a different administration, going back even a couple of years, we started talking about for funding purposes, we had to wait until we could get money in the budget. So we've been talking about this for a couple of years. Now it has come up where our funding is there, and we have other issues that we're all concerned about. And I, I fully understand that, that it's a tool for law enforcement for arrest purposes to, and not to arrest immigration, or to get onto immigration, or worry about anybody who's, who's in this country, maybe illegally. We have nothing to do with that. We don't have an agreement with ICE, and we're not going to have an agreement with ICE. If I did, the commissioners, they even had thought about it, the commissioner would have to prove it first. So I can never do that on my own, or I wouldn't. Just the other day, I think somebody made a comment about the issue we have had at some of the stores on township line with the thefts. I did a story on it the other day to bring it to the attention again of what's going on, that we use these license plate readers and made arrests from those, that's at those stores. So with Upper Darby's or Radnor's, we have been able to make arrests with that. So it does keep our crime breakdown, and it's just, I just can't say enough that it's a valuable tool for us. I hope I answered your question, Commissioner.
You did. Thank you, Chief. That's, that's all I have.
Just to, to you back on Commissioner Holmes, I think, I share the sentiment that this is a difficult situation. I think it's the reasons why the chief just said. I mean, this is, this was, has been come incredibly more difficult over the last 60, 90 days. And in large part, just to state it very bluntly, like the erosion of due process at the federal level, or by ICE agents, or what you see in the news, it erodes public trust in not only ICE and federal entities, it erodes confidence and trust that citizens of this country have in institutions such as this board. It erodes trust and confidence that citizens have in every municipal law enforcement agency. Because you heard the comments tonight, that none of it, not, not one single person stood up there and, and thought that it, it was Haverford Township, Police Department, or Chief Iola, or our board, or anybody. The fear was, what could the data be used for? And I think that's real, and I think you can say it out loud, that, you know, I, I certainly recognize that it is real. And I have had conversations with people about this, and I don't have the perfect explanation or the perfect rationalization for my vote. But I would just say that five months ago, or last summer, when there was the, when we, we talked about this in relation to incidents that occurred on West Chester Pike, I certainly thought that this was a valuable tool, that was certainly in place in other municipalities in our surrounding area, that's in place on the Pennsylvania Turnpike, and I think to a large extent, these cameras exist, and our license plates are being read, whether we do or not. And I understand the sentiment of the desire for us as a board to make a stand, or even a public pronunciation, as sort of a renuncification of the due process, or lack of due process that ICE is instituting. But the only way I see through this process is to continue to operate Haverford Township in a professional manner and to vote in ways that we will think will make our community better. And this is, this is a tool that I think exists all around us every day already, and all we're doing is not having it applied when you pass the Blue Route, leaving Marple, until you get to Upper Darby. Everywhere else on West Chester Pike, it's already being used. You get on the Blue Route and get on the Turnpike, it's already being used. It's in use on Roswell Boulevard. It's been, you know, speed cameras have been in use in Maryland going back to 2009. I don't, saying that toothpaste is out of the, is out of the bottle seems quaint, and the issues that we're talking about, because these are very real issues. And I wish I could just, you know, I, I know Chief Iola knows this, but if I could just say to all the cops in Haverford Township that you, you gotta understand that this, this ICE stuff and the lack of due process, that, I mean, the lack of due process is a fundamental bedrock of our constitution, and, and it's, you know, constitutional law one, and it's, it's part of what makes America America. And when we erode that, we erode confidence in all of us, and it, it, it takes away our entire system. So I am going to, I will say that I'm going to vote for this tonight, for the reasons that I think it is a beneficial and useful law enforcement tool that is already being used throughout Delaware County, throughout the state, and throughout the country. And I don't think it's a complicit action towards ICE or the activities. As much as I abhor all of that, if ICE is going to do, take some of that action, that they have access to license plates, they have access to certain data information that is not going to come from Haverford Township, and we're not going to be complicit in the fact that we're not going to work with it, with them if they came here, and you heard the chief just say they haven't. So I think we, we have to balance how we're proceeding in this new environment. My honorable companion.
Thank you. Well said.
I'd like to ask a question. So are we committing to spending $28,980 every year for five years with this resolution?
That's correct, Commissioner, yes.
So that would be roughly $145,000?
That's correct.
Over the course of five years?
Yes.
I'm, I'm very much struggling with this, and I trust you, Police Chief Iola, and all of the Haverford Township police officers who serve our community with great devotion and care. I have called you on many occasions, and you were always responsive, and so caring and empathetic to our citizens. Like, for example, when I called a couple summers ago because someone was afraid of this raccoon that was behaving very oddly in the middle of the day, and I forget the name of the officer, and shame on me, but he was so kind to the people who were scared of this creature. So even though I trust our township police to do the right thing every single time, I'm not so trusting of other law enforcement agencies. And I also believe that when there's an audit done of these license plate reader images, 99.9% of the vehicles are all law-abiding citizens, they're not doing anything wrong.
Correct.
And yet, their license plates are recorded and held in a database for days, months, years.
One year.
One year. But I'm, like Mr. McCluskey said, I'm kind of suspicious of whether the data will be purged. So I'm really concerned, and I, with great respect to everyone, I will not be supporting this, and I would actually suggest that $150,000 might be better used in one of our very dangerous streets to create a really great pedestrian crosswalk, so our pedestrians could get across Manoa Road, or maybe over at Manoa and Eagle. So I'm sorry to disappoint you, but I won't be supporting this.
I respect your decision.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondek?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb?
No.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
No.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to continue with the citizens' forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Kindly ask again that you keep your remarks to approximately three minutes. This does not need to be on an agenda item. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Mr. Hall, as a reminder, please provide your name and your approximate address. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Todd Hall, Second Ward. Commissioner Holmes, I liked your idea of rate my feedback, we could have that for maybe public commentators too, as an idea.
Then I won't be alone anymore, will I, Mr. Hall?
So for the issue of where the glass recycling bin is located, parking, for the first time in my township meeting attendance history, was very full tonight, so the parking spots are definitely needed. I also noticed, and was able to look this up online quickly while here tonight, 5% to 10% of what you buy at the grocery store is in a glass container. So the vast majority of what we're purchasing at the store is in plastic or something else that can be put in a single stream, but I think that's important to keep in mind when thinking of things related to glass recycling. Finally, too, it is indeed a dumpster, even if it has something like recycling in it compared to trash, at the end of the day, it's a dumpster, and the placement of it is important for aesthetics. I'm also up here tonight to speak about a flag that flies at our township building at certain times in the year, and the flag that I speak of is the Phillies' flag. The Phillies were established in 1882. This township was founded in 1682 and incorporated in 1911. Both have a long history. The Phillies have a Red Goes Green initiative to support environmental awareness and sustainability, and our township has similar goals. The Phillies are partners in the community, seeking to provide opportunities to all, so does the township. The Phillies are supporters of the LGBTQ+ community, with a theme in April that celebrates the rich culture of the group. Our township celebrates this also. The Phillies are an organization that Havertonians can celebrate together, regardless of ethnicity, race, sociological status, sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression differences. The Phillies are becoming further and further removed by time since their 2008 World Series victory, and are in need of all the help that they can get. Accordingly, I believe that the best flag to fly during all of the summer months in the entire Phillies' season from our township building is the Phillies' flag, as they represent the same values as our township. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Anyone else on the left-hand side? Right-hand side? Yes, hi.
Good evening. Brian Ramona, Ninth Ward, Wellfield Avenue. Want to congratulate you on the adoption of that ordinance for the cameras. Those of you who don't know, I work as a traffic reporter in the city. I have access to PennDOT's bank of cameras, so I can see a lot of things that you'd be very surprised that I can see when I'm working. And that's only a fraction of the cameras that PennDOT has, that they look at everything. There's a, if you go into their data center in King of Prussia, their main nerve center, they have cameras on almost every intersection throughout the region. If you drive through the area, for example, on Township Line Road, you'll see cameras up on those traffic lights, and they're there, they can see everything. And Chief Iola brought up a very good point about the Pennsylvania Turnpike. When you're on the Turnpike, every time you go through the Turnpike to one of the toll places, you're being read. So Commissioner Gondak brought up the point of that there is no assumption of privacy when you're driving, there just is not. So welcome to somewhat of 1984. Big Brother is always watching. We can, they can see you, we can see you, people that you don't know can see you, whether you know this or not, PennDOT cameras are available on their website, 511pa.com, and anybody at home can pull up the website and look at cameras throughout the region. So, just so you know. I did want to bring up something in my work with the Historical Commission, I want to kind of put it early on the radar, so the Haverford Heritage Festival is coming up on June 1st. The Heritage Festival is a little different than Haverford Township Day, which is more of a, I don't want to say it's a commercial effort, but it's an effort for vendors to be able to sell things, and, you know, a lot of good food and things like that along Darby Road. The Heritage Festival, of course, is up on Carrick Drive, it's 11:00 to 4:00 on Sunday the 1st. There's a lot of fun things to do there, there's a lot of interesting things to see, and there's a lot you can learn about the township that you may not have known. For example, that there was once a very large amusement park called Beechwood, and the gentleman who's obsessed with Beechwood will have his table there, I'm sure, and educate you on everything there is to know about Beechwood, which Commissioner Hart is well aware of. There is a marker still where that amusement park was at one point, and we're still trying to figure out what to do with that, with the Historical Commission. So we hope that you can all come. I wanted to make sure that we got it on the radar early. Last year, we realized that when we came to the June meeting, it was the week before. So hopefully, we will see many of you out there. The Historical Commission will have a table, and will be able to tell you exactly what we're doing, including the plaque program, which we will be talking about next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramona. Any further comments from folks in the public? Then I'll invite my colleagues now at this time to respond to or make remarks regarding any matters raised during citizens' forum. Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Are there any matters that my colleagues wish to bring forward for discussion at this Hearing none, we now move on to the other business portion of our meeting, during which commissioners may make their final remarks. We'll start with Commissioner Gondak.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things to bring up. One is, I just want to remind everyone that the township is actually going to be closed on Friday, April 18th, so there will be no trash or recycling pickup that day. Instead, that trash and recycling will be moved till Monday, April 21st, and that Monday, there will be no brush pickup. As far as announcements, the Westgate Hill Civic Association is hosting movie night on Saturday, May 17th. I don't have the movie yet, but it's over at the park, it's a great time, the movie starts at dusk, but it's obviously a very family-friendly event, and I encourage people, I hope the weather permits, and I encourage people to come out and attend it. Finally, I want to just make a note that on Wednesday, April 30th, myself and Commissioner Trombetta will be hosting a joint First and Fourth Ward Town Hall meeting. It'll be, like I said, Wednesday, April 30th, at 7:00 PM, in this room of the township building. Commissioner Trombetta and myself will be present, along with other representatives from the township, to answer questions and to give updates on things going on around the town. Other than that, I know the kids are on spring break this week, so just be conscientious, there's going to be more kids out and about during the day, and in the evening, and have a good day.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Forstiegrub, your turn.
Thank you. I'd like to read something that James Baldwin said about the New York Public Library. He would go to the 135th Street branch when he was growing up. He said, quote, "I went at least three or four times a week, and I read everything there. In some blind and instinctive way, I knew that what was happening in those books was also happening all around me. And I was trying to make a connection between those books and the life I saw and the life I lived," end of quote. Libraries are so critical to the vitality and the connections we build as a community. And our library is going to be having its grand opening on May 22nd, which is Thursday, at 8:30. The library has many, many festivities planned for that day, and I hope everyone will come and see that new library, and walk in through those glass doors, and be amazed at what we now have for our community. I'd also like to point out that the last day that the Manoa sort of annex of the library will be open is Saturday, April 19th. It will be open from 9 to 5. And if you go, you can check out a book, or more than a book, I have a whole stack at home, and I can keep them until June 20th. So if you want to get a great cookbook and actually live with it for a little while, or your stack beside your bedside is a little bit high, and you want to keep that novel a little bit longer, I'd highly recommend going to the Public Library in Manoa Center, and check out a whole bunch of books, because that means they don't have to move them to the new location, and you can bring them there later. So please go to our library, help them out, add to your reading, and look forward to May 22nd. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstiegrub. Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of days into the presidency, I started to draft my first angry Facebook post about the plane crash in the Potomac, and within a couple of hours, it was replaced by yet another outrageous action out of the White House, and each 24 to 36 hours, more outrageous actions continue to come. And it's possible to feel paralyzed in these circumstances about what to do when you see things that are happening that are so antithetical to what we stand for as Americans, and I'm struggling myself with what to do that, and that's what made tonight so difficult, because I, as my co-commissioner very intelligently observed, this decision was a no-brainer five months ago. But do we treat our citizens, do we treat our police department, do we treat everyone with suspicion now, because at the highest level, we treat so many people with suspicion? So I say that to justify my vote, and I'm sure that will disappoint people who have counted on what is, at times, my knee-jerk reaction to things, and what other times I think is thoughtful reaction to things such as the militarization of suburban police departments, and overreaching by the government. And I just want to assure people that it's something I think about every single day, and something I thought about very much for these last two meetings and this consideration. This is going to sound funny when I say this, I actually trust this data and this type of surveillance in our local PDs and local governments more than I do in private hands, because the courts, despite, you know, what we're fearing right now, are still a place where people are able to rein in government action and enforce their rights. And I continue, as a lawyer, the only way I can get up in the morning is to continue to think that the courts are the place where we can enforce those rights. And until it's clearly demonstrated to me otherwise, I will actually continue to encourage people to seek redress in the courts when they think the government is overreaching or violating their rights. And so that's all I have. I appreciate the chief's candor and his very open and honest discussion tonight about what we discussed, and all my colleagues' thoughts on this topic. It is close to home, and it may be hard to say, I'm going to fight at the highest level, but I'm going to let things like this happen at the local level. But I think that's a balance I have to engage in, and tonight, I'm comfortable with that decision. So it is, for folks who observe, it is Passover, and I wish you all a happy Passover, for folks who observe, Holy Week, a very solemn, holy week for all of you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Quinn.
Yes, the Grange is always looking for everybody to help out, so if you have time, you can go help the Grange, they're a great, great group there. And it is a spring break, as I've said, so drive slow, and with the warm days ahead, you'll see lots of kids on other way to other games, so make sure you drive slow, because there's lots of kids out and playing in the street too. So that's good to see, it's warm again, too. And I'd like to thank everybody who lives along Mill and Greenway Roads, well over by the library there, they've dealt with a lot over the past year, so I thank them, and I just, the roads have been closed there, so they've worked with the team there to help out things, too. I'd like to thank the chief as well, for everything that you've done over your career for this community, and I've served as the police or committee chair for a few years now, and anytime you ask the chief, if anything, he's not afraid to, or to talk about the tough stuff, and that's why he's the best chief in the area. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, work has started on Brookline Park, stormwater management is being installed over the coming weeks. During that time, the parking lot in the park will be closed. This will be followed later in the year with the grading of the property, and by the fall, we should hopefully have installed playground equipment, and a basketball court, and some trees, and so hopefully, we'll get through Phase 1 this year, but I'll give updates along the way. Also, coming up is the Haverford Township Earth Day Celebration. It'll be a week from Saturday, it's April 26th, from 9 to 12 at the Reserve. Some of the event highlights include volunteer planting opportunities, where planting trees and pollinators, a guided mushroom walk and talk, there will be a tree giveaway, courtesy of Bartlett Tree Experts, wildlife and animal encounter with a live animal show, a naturalist bioplets, where you can help document local biodiversity, and an environmental festival with lots of exhibits, eco-friendly activities, and you can connect with local sustainability initiatives. So please come on out and celebrate on April 26th at the Reserve. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner McCollum.
Yes, all three things that I was going to speak about tonight have already been taken, so I'd like to take this opportunity, on behalf of the township residents, Ninth Ward, thank Brian Barrett and his recreation department. Also, I am a member of Hilltop's Board of Directors, and we received Lights at the Field. The first night game took place April 1st, and I actually had the opportunity to be the umpire for the game, I do some umpiring, and the kids were thrilled, the parents were thrilled, the league's thrilled, so thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Thank you, Brian. And Vice President McCloskey.
Commissioner Holmes has something he needs to add.
Yeah, I swear, it's more upbeat. Mr. Cavender and I had threatened to hold a joint public meeting. Commissioner Cavender came to her senses and is having her own meeting for the Fifth Ward. She's not here tonight, but I'm sure she wouldn't mind me saying it is May the 6th, and I think it's here in the township building. I will return to my roots and have a traditional Sixth Ward barbecue, guess who's the dinner? And we will either have that at Chestnut Wald or here, this is not an easy place to get, and Chestnut Wald is a lot more fun for all of us, and easier to get to. So I will plan that meeting around the idea of the recirculation of the comprehensive plan, and as always, to answer any questions folks have in the Sixth Ward, or anyone who would like to come and hear what folks have to say. So thanks for your time, yielding your time, Commissioner McCloskey, and I yield back.
I do, it has felt like a heavy meeting, but I do want to note that I did appreciate the number of people who came tonight to express their enjoyment of pickleball in our parks. There was also reference regarding the glass recycling container to the amount of cars that would be in this lot because of Brookline Baseball and the stadium. And I just think it is nice to highlight that these facilities and these parks, these stadiums, the fields, they're being used by people. I mean, that's the concept of these parks, and, you know, we have a lot of great resources in Haverford Township, and the weather's getting nice, and I hope all the residents can get out and enjoy them in one way or another, in whatever way they desire. So on a lighter note, Commissioner Hart regained the Commissioner's Cup at the Kevin Kane Run last week, but there's a Chestnut Wald Chase on May 18th, 2025, so I don't know if he's interested in that, but we'll see if any of the other commissioners are going to partake. But I would encourage residents, certainly in the Ardmore area and Morrodon Park areas, that's a 5K to support the school, they also have a one-mile kid run. And finally, support the school. They also have a, a one-mile kid run. Um, and finally, I just would like to note, um, back to more serious topics, uh, best to Governor Shapiro and his, his family. Um, they were celebrating Passover, and, uh, you know, there, there was an act of, um, violence and hatred that, you know, we, I certainly don't have all the information on to date. Um, but I just wanted to read a quote from him, um, that I, you know, hopefully, um, I think was a good quote, but also sort of how the, the mentality, um, we should all have. "If he was trying to terrorize our family, our friends, the Jewish community who joined us for a Passover seater in that room last night, hear me on this. We celebrated our faith last night proudly. In a few hours, we will celebrate our second seater of the Passo, of Passover again proudly." Um, so best to Governor Shapiro and his family. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Um, I just wanted to catch that date again, Larry, for the roast.
Oh, I haven't picked it out yet.
Kidding.
Yeah, don't worry.
I'm forward to that. Be there. Count me in. Um...
And the PD. They better be talking to me now.
Um, I'll close tonight by thanking everyone who's in attendance this evening, um, and for your participation. Uh, before we wrap up, I just wanted to share a few items, um, coming up. So first, on Friday, April 25th, Discover Haverford is hosting its Sip and Savor Soiree at Brick and Brew in Havertown. Thank you, Brian. Um, this is a key fundraiser celebrating just cause, Discover Haverford's 15 years of work to support our local business community. We'll also be recognizing outstanding businesses and community leaders, and tickets are available on, um, at discoverhaverford.org. I also just wanted to reiterate that I'm looking forward to partnering again with Commissioner Gondak to hold our Town Hall for the First and Fourth Ward residents on Tuesday, April 30th, at 7:00 PM here at the Township Building. We look forward to seeing some of you there. And finally, thank you to our community organizations who recently hosted egg hunts and spring events for our community. I personally had a wonderful time at the Linwood Park Civic Association's Egg Hunt on Sunday. Look forward to Paddock Farn Civic Association's event on April 19th. These gatherings, I think, are a big part of what our community, what makes our community so special. Um, and I just wanted to wish all those who are celebrating a very happy Easter and happy Passover. I hope these holidays bring you peace, joy, and meaningful time with your loved ones. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Thank you. Motion, meeting's adjourned.